Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, can I have a parliamentary moment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Since tonight is rather lengthy as far as motions, just want to remind everyone and bring up the correct language to use to make a motion is "I move," not "I make a motion." So it's "I move" followed by the statement of the motion. So, just a reminder.
Thank you. Heidi, please note that we are missing two board members, Lore and Iverson. Item 4.2, conflicts of interest, are there any to report at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to item 4.3 and seek a review and approval of the agenda for this evening.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
We do have one.
Oh, adjustment?
One adjustment, yes. The Capital City Campus.
Yeah, no, actually.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Under 6.2.2.
Oh, yes.
Heavy equipment operator equipment there for leases and an airplane lease. And I'm asking that we postpone action on the airplane lease until August. We'll still take the heavy equipment leases tonight, though.
So the agenda doesn't change, just the...
Oh, sorry.
Yep, so the agenda won't change, it's just the concept within of what we're fully approving.
Yep.
Okay.
So no amendment to the agenda?
Got it.
Okay, we've got our motion, we've got our second. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 4.4, we'll seek an approval for the minutes from the June 9th meeting, please.
I move approval of the June 9th meeting.
We got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. 4.5, we will receive the financial reports for June 2025.
All right. The general fund operation received property tax proceeds in the amount of $527,000, along with the final state aid payment for the 24, 25 fiscal year. $50,000 of other revenue consisted of the biannual transportation reimbursement related to various activity trips. The fund's ending cash position of $9.5 million reflects a slight decrease when compared to the prior year. The capital outlay fund included revenue of the typical June property taxes in the amount of $297,000. Contributions in the amount of $25,000 was received from First Interstate Bank in support of the Jim Murles. Expenditures included the scheduled payment for construction in progress of Phase 2 of the athletic complex. This fund's ending cash position in the amount of $6.2 million is below that of the previous year as we expend construction in progress and spend down the $5 million capital outlay certificate in support of the project. Special education reported $433,000 in revenue consisting of taxes and state aid. This fund's ending cash position of $3.8 million is above the previous year. K-12 enterprise operations of food service concessions, preschools, and driver's ed showed little activity with notation that activity will pick up in August as we head into the school year. LATC received several different revenue sources, including $198,000 in reported tuition and $82,000 in state sources. Expenditures were reported at $2.8 million and included a construction in progress payment towards the surge tech renovation, equipment purchases, and boiler HVAC replacement progress to round out the fiscal year projects. The cash balance of $8.7 million is above that of the previous year. LATC enterprise operations of food service, daycare, and bookstore were typical for this time of year, with increased activity anticipated in the upcoming months. Employee benefit trust showed that the premiums exceeded the claims for the month of June. The ending cash balance of $3.3 million is $181,000 below that of the previous year for reported cash on hand at fiscal year end. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Heidi, appreciate it. We'll move to item 4.6 with the student staff renovation.
Awesome. Look, so great to have so many people in the audience tonight, especially, I know we've got a number of seniors who have graduated and so appreciate everybody for coming tonight. I've got one staff award I would like to present right away. We happen to be in the presence of greatness here tonight. The 2025 Office Professional of the Year for the State of South Dakota is none other than McKinley Early Childhood Center Office Professional Timberly Lundey. You got, hold on, you got to do the photo. We got to get you in that one.
Okay.
Yep, so you got to face Mr. Cruz first. And then for the viewing audience, you got to look into that one.
Congratulations.
Next, I have softball. Earning all-conference this year was Aleah Johnston. And I believe she's at College Orientation today, so. And then academic all-state in softball, Aleah Johnston and Kinsley Johnson. All right, next we have golf. And this young lady actually shot a 28 for a nine-hole score this summer at one point in an event, so that's quite outstanding. She earned both all-tournament team and all-conference, Gabby Olson. Did I get that score right?
Yep.
Yep. Next is tennis. Earning academic all-state, we have Sam Karst and Skylar Stanton. Let's give them a hand. Okay, and I have two groups of track, so I'm going to do the academic all-state first. And so for our academic all-state track individuals, you're going to come up individually and then file along here till we get all the academic all-state up, get you in the shot, and then we'll move you out, and then we'll bring in the all-conference. So, this is earning academic all-state in track. Grace Corey, Jaren Feiber, Elizabeth Riefenberger.
Good job.
Olivia Reese.
Congratulations.
Marlee Wadsworth, Erica Woolley, Austin Redfield, Alex Riefenberger, Jeremiah Schulte.
Austin?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
And Daniel Uncoff. Congratulations to our academic all-staters. And the last group, earning all-conference, all-ESD. Grace Corey, Marlee Wadsworth, Erica Woolley, Elena Smith, McKenna Blank, Malah McGee, Reese Munger, Jordan Remmers, Austin Redfield, Jeremiah Schulte, Dane Stark, Charles Whiting, Asher Young, Jacob Holgate, Alan Moan, and Lincoln Scott. Congratulations on all-ESD conference. And then, Mr. Chair, I have one more award I would like to present. This is, for those who don't know, this is Mr. Stein's final meeting of the Watertown School Board after serving from 2015 to 2025, so 10 years of service to the Watertown School District. And I have a couple of things for you. One of them, I happen to have some friends at Stein-Sign, and a couple of months ago, you did me the honor of a billboard. And so I'd like you to see the billboard that our friends at Stein-Sign will have. Thank you for 10 years of leadership on the Watertown School Board.
There you go.
So that's pretty cool.
Nice.
Make sure they know you to put up your stuff.
And then, just a personal thank you. As the superintendent, you happen to be the last remaining board member of the five original board members that hired me, so I've had the opportunity to work with you my entire eight years that I've been here. Very grateful for, one, making an excellent decision. But, two, just for everything that you've done for me personally and professionally, the guidance, the times, you've probably been the board president four out of the eight years that I've been here, and so the ability to call when I need some help or help us navigate different things. But my, kind of the top three accomplishments, just so you can put in your thoughts, accomplishing the high school remodel. If you remember that process, that, we worked on that the year leading up to COVID, and we had to make it, so the world kind of shut down in March, and we were faced with a kind of a dramatic decision. We didn't know what was going on, you know, how everything was going to go, and still have the courage to go through with it. And then in April of 2020, we voted, and then we worked on the remodel. And what a great decision that turned out to be for the board because for $15 million remodel, by the end of the remodel would have probably been about $45 million. So the way construction costs have been, so just to have the courage to be able to do that when we, with all the uncertainty. And then also the elementary reconfiguration, just, you know, we took two years to study that, and we had a tough meeting at the end of the first year where we ended up in a 2-2 tie with essentially the move to the administration to further study it. And I think about how we ended up coming out of that and the McKinley Early Childhood Center and the reconfiguration of our boundaries, just, again, there's so much courage in how that that all played out and what it means for Watertown. And then also, we're going to see it here, it is going to get done, everybody. But the Allen Mitchell Field project, and what a beautiful vision that is, and to see that to completion and know that you were a part of that, and again, I say that takes a lot of courage to do that. We have a historic stadium that we've been working on, and we're appreciative of the city and using it for baseball, but just to have that vision and see this to completion, I just think that's a nice capstone to that. And just one, kind of, kind of, it's still a little close to me, but your photos from the elementary lunch, when we had some, just some things going around with our lunch program a few years ago post-COVID with all of our shipments and trying to get food here and some of that stuff, and just thank you for your leadership. And so I have this plaque for you, and it says, "From the Watertown School District, presented to Stuart Stein in gratitude for your dedication, devotion, and loyal service as a school board member, 2015 to 2025." Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. Thank you very much for the kind words, Dr. Gannison. Obviously, it takes a team effort. I mean, we just did the budget report, right, and we're in great shape, over 20% on our general funds, so stuff like that doesn't happen without really great people operating from within. I'm grateful, you know, it was really my mom that helped to kind of encourage along the way to do it. And just in reflecting over the last couple of weeks, really, and the conversation that we had just last week, the people that are graduating now, the students that are graduating now were in third grade or fourth grade or something like that when I first started, it's just pretty wild to think about. I didn't have twins at the time, and now I've got four kids and more gray hair, and it's just, it's been a blessing. I feel like I'm the one that really came out a winner in all of this, and grateful to have just been able to learn from you and your leadership and be surrounded by really talented people. Thank you to the board members, you guys have done a phenomenal job, and feel grateful that Bailey, you chose to want to come and serve the district as well. We're in great hands going forward. I had made a comment a couple of meetings ago that I was 90% sure I was going to be done, and and literally, like, down to the last couple of hours, I had my petition, like, I had it. I mean, I just, it was that, it was that close. I just, the fear of letting go or just the fear of the unknown, I mean, it was, it was very, very close. So I'm not ruling it out, I might, I might do it again. But for now, grateful to be able to spend a little extra time going to some kids' activities and getting my priorities in line with family and whatnot, so it's just, it's time, but grateful to have served. So thanks again, everybody. All right, we will move to item 5.1 with public input on agenda or non-agenda items for Lake Area Tech, if there's anyone here. Seeing none, we'll move then to personnel and welcome President Sanderson, so thank you for being here. And we'll start with personnel and the resignations, please.
Very good. Before you are three resignations and ask for the board's approval as those are presented, and share my thanks with those staff for their service at Lake Area Tech.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval of resignations as stated in item 6.1.1.
We've got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6.1.2, the contract recommendations and addendums.
Before you are a variety of contract recommendations for full-time staff, some adjuncts, corporate education contracts, and some part-time help. You'll see one addition from today as opposed to what we would have sent out in the board packet last week. Certainly we'll be open to any questions if you have those, but recommend approval as they are presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I have it.
I'll move that we approve contract recommendations and addendums as presented.
We've got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions, comments there? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. 6.1.3, consider educational stipend requests.
We have one staff member who's been working on a master's in library science and completes some credits this summer. Recommend your approval as those are presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the educational stipend request.
Got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Molton. Any discussion?
Excellent. Good choice, library science.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We'll go to item 6.2.1 with the property.
Our first item on the property agenda for you tonight is a change order connected to the surgical technology renovation. The change order consists of two modifications totaling $1,200, and that really comes down to adding some power in sanitation equipment in that project. That would bring our remaining contingency to $24,684 and the total cost on the project to $982,580. I'll stand by for any questions you have and recommend your approval of that change order as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the change order number three as described for surgical technology renovation.
We've got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6.2.2 with consideration of equipment lease agreements with possible change.
Yes, thank you. So before you are two different kinds of lease agreements. There are two lease agreements for wheel loaders and the heavy equipment operator program. Those are both low-cost leases. One wheel loader we would rent for seven months at $7,000, and the other wheel loader for the full 12 months for $12,000. And I recommend your approval of both of those as presented. The third item that was listed in your board packet was a lease for an airplane for a professional pilot program, and I recommend that we postpone action on that item until the August meeting. We've been discussing some changes in that lease agreement, so we'll hold on that until next month, but would ask that you take action tonight on the heavy equipment leases.
Is there a motion to approve as presented?
I move approval of the equipment lease agreements as presented minus the postponement of the airplane purchase or lease.
We've got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6.2.3 with the consideration of the facility lease agreement at the Capital City Campus.
Thank you. So this lease agreement is our annual agreement that's in place with Capital City Campus in Pier. This is home to our nursing program based out of central South Dakota. Last year, about 20% of our nurses spent some time at some point going through that program. If we have West River or central South Dakota nursing candidates, they often do their skills checks in their clinicals at the pier site, so really appreciate the partnership we have with Capital City Campus. We have a classroom and lab space, a storage area, and an office in their facility, about 1,200 square feet. And this year's lease agreement would be at $13.39 per square foot totaling $16,162. That agreement is in place from July 1st of '25 through June 30th of 2026. I'll stand by for any questions that you have, but recommend approval as that's presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of facility lease agreement with Capital City Campus concerning nursing as presented.
Got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments?
I assume that they work with the local hospital, St. Mary's?
They do, with Avera in Pier and a couple of the long-term care facilities in that area as well.
Excellent, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6.2.4, the authority to bid fiscal '26 equipment.
Thank you. In your packet is a table containing the equipment funded by both federal and state grant dollars coming up this next year that would exceed the cost, so that we would need to go to bid on those equipment items. Between federal Perkins dollars and the one-time state appropriated grant funds, the total estimated cost for the equipment that would be purchased through those funds is just over $1 million and would serve programs in agriculture, auto, building trades, dental, energy, law enforcement. And so would certainly stand by for any questions or curiosities that you have related to that, but recommend your approval that we are able to go to bid on that equipment.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the authority to bid fiscal year '26 equipment as described.
Second.
We've got a motion by Molton, second by Rosman. Any questions, comments there? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Authority to bid the fleet vehicles.
Thank you. Tonight, we're seeking your authority to go to bid for three fleet vehicles related to building trades and our heavy equipment operator program. These vehicles would all be pickups that support our instructors that have to go back and forth from main campus out to work or construction sites. The bid that we'd like to go forward with would contain two pickups for building trades and one for heavy equipment operator. We're estimating the total cost of those three vehicles at $100,000. That's budgeted in the budget that you all looked at in the budget hearing tonight under our fleet category.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the authority to bid fleet vehicles as presented.
We've got a motion by Molton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, 7.1, if there's anyone here from the public to speak on an agenda or non-agenda items, now would be the time.
Hi, Will. My name is Megan Swanson. I am a proud graduate of Watertown High School. I am also a proud mother of a junior in high school. My husband graduated from here, my mom graduated from here. Both my in-laws graduated from here and all of my brother-in-laws graduated from here, so we have a longstanding history with Watertown High School, which I'm very proud to be a part of. It has come to my attention, and I think it has probably come to a lot of people's attention in the last week or so, there's been some social media havoc about the previous Sadie Hawkins dance. I don't think that it is something that maybe, maybe to a lot of people, it's not something that's really important, but I do think to about 500 kids, it's important. The juniors and seniors have stated to each other on social media that it's something that they would like to continue. It's something that was not brought to their attention until it was disbanded. It was not, there was not the opportunity for them to give their opinion. There was not the opportunity for them to voice how they felt about it. I'm really concerned when we expect respect, but we don't give it. I don't feel like these junior and senior girls were respected. I don't feel like it's fair for us to expect what we don't give out. I understand that it's just a dance, but it's not just a dance. It's juniors and seniors who have went, some of them 12 years through school together. It's them deciding that they want to continue to be in events together. They want to do things together. Opening it up to becoming a 9 through 12 event is not what they want. It's not what parents want. It's not the tradition of Watertown High School. It's unfortunate that there weren't more of them here, but I feel like as a parent and as a proud member of the community, that's my job, to stand up for what they want, what they're asking for. I don't think it's a, it's a topic that needs to be fought. I don't think it's a topic that necessarily needs... Nobody has to be right or wrong. I think we just have to come to an agreement that these kids should get what they want because they're juniors and seniors graduating from one of the best schools in the state of South Dakota. I had, I was able to have a meeting today with the principal of the Watertown High School, which I appreciated her taking her time to visit with me. I don't feel like we maybe agreed, but I do feel like it was a productive conversation. I just want to make sure that these kids are offered at least, at the bare minimum, to hear their voices heard. I think a lot of people have seen there was a change.org position or petition that was circulated via Facebook. I'm not always a big fan of that because I feel like if you're not going to put up and come to the meetings and say what needs to be said, social media, it's easy for everybody to be a keyboard warrior. However, there was 500 people that signed it, so somebody somewhere wants you to listen. And I feel like if I don't bring it to the board's attention, maybe you don't know. I, I just want these kids to have the high school experience that they want and that they deserve. So, I don't, I don't expect mountains, but I feel like at least it's, I would like it at least to be discussed among the board with the Watertown High School administration, so these kids feel like they're listened to. Questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here from the public to speak on agenda or non-agenda items? We'll move to item 7.2 with the Northeast Tech High School report.
Yes, a reminder for those board members that our meeting is this Wednesday at 5:45. Making sure we have enough to have a quorum for that meeting, so appreciate your attendance at that if you are on that board.
All right, a bunch of first reading of policies here, 7.3.1, the CH policy implementation.
Yes, we are back to, the last month was a little more of, so our second readings are more from legislative changes that we needed to make. These are back to our policy review. We're into the Cs, and we got to a D. The C, the three C policies are all for review. When we matched them up with the associate school boards, they either were the same policy still or the sample policy did not change the substance, so we left ours in place. And then on DFA, the revenues from investments, we added in policy what probably is stating... And then on DFA, the revenues from investments, we added in policy what probably is stating the obvious, but the one addition is the board will approve the investment of all funds and this approval will be filed and recorded by the business manager. It was already being done in practice, but we stated that in the policy. So all of those are for your review.
Very nice. Thank you.
If we want to make changes, corrections, next meeting, discuss?
Do you have?
Well, just a thought. Approval of handbooks and directives. I think in the past, the school board used to approve the high school handbook. I think that was actually part of their business meeting. Just a thought.
Yeah, the current policy has been in place since oh eight, so it would have been prior to that, I guess, if it were.
This is quite a while ago. Just an observance.
All right, moving then to action items. We've got eight point one. If there's a motion to approve the bills, please.
I move we approve the bills.
Got a motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved.
Thank you for paying the bills.
Yes, personnel, eight point two point one, resignations.
One resignation tonight for your consideration and recommended approval. Thank you for your service there.
Is there a motion to?
Sorry, I'm not on the right page. I move to approve the resignations that's listed.
Got a motion by Rosman and a second there I heard by Moulton. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I think I whispered.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. The contract recommendations and addendums, please.
A few new contracts to be issued here as well as lane changes and other hours. We recommend your approval here.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the contract recommendations and addendums as listed.
We've got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. We will now consider some educational stipend requests.
One request here for twenty-one credits would recommend your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the educational stipend request as listed.
We've got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
And a second by Moulton. Any questions, comments here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion's approved. We'll move to item eight point three point one with considerations of project success MOU with the Human Service Agency.
Yes, this MOU is between the district and the Human Service Agency for the purpose of establishing responsibilities of both parties and provisions of alcohol, tobacco, or other drug prevention and early intervention programming with the goal of student academic engagement and success by reducing factors that put students at risk for substance abuse. The scope of the service provides a project success coordinator for both the middle and high school. The agreement outlines a cost to the district of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to be a, to be compensated by Title IV funding.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the MOU with the Human Service Agency as described.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments?
Just love to see that one keep going. It's important. It's a great partnership that you guys have with them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Item eight point three point two will consider an engagement with the audit services.
Yes, this motion engages I Bailey as the district's auditors for the period ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. I Bailey will audit the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities for the fund remaining or as of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of I Bailey for audit services for fiscal year twenty-five.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. We'll consider a surplus resolution.
Yes, this surplus resolution is recommended to approve the surp, declaring a bus surplus for salvage as per an insurance claim.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the surplus resolution as presented.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. We'll consider a change order number seven for the athletic complex, phase two.
Yes, change order number seven. The proposed change order consists of five modifications to the project in the amount of a thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollar addition to the contract. The changes include added scope to provide updated structural attachments for roof signage and revisions to required lockbox access and ticket gate entry. The construction contingency was approved at five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the change order adjusts the remaining contingency to three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The contract for this project is adjusted at just over eleven million dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of change order number seven as presented.
We've got a motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Heidi, a question there for you. You mentioned the contingency is still right around three hundred and some thousand dollars-ish. Being this far along in the project, does it appear as though we're in good shape and probably going to come in like not using all of the contingency?
Yes, that's a good point. So our construction contingency, as you noted, was approved at five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's part of every project where we have a contingency just in case things come up or there's added scope. So at this point of the project, we're nearing the very end, and so we still have three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars remaining. Just for the purpose of financials, we do budget for the full amount considering that those costs may arise. This way, we'll be able to write off about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from what we are anticipating in cost.
Which is nice.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Cool.
So doing very well in terms of that overall project cost.
Awesome. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Item, item eight point three point five will consider speech-language pathology services MOU with Prairie Lakes Healthcare.
Yes, this MOU is between the district and Prairie Lakes for the purpose of providing speech-language, speech-language services to the district. The agreement outlines a cost of seventy-two dollars per hour for services provided.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the speech-language pathology services MOU with Prairie Lakes.
Got a motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments?
I want to make a comment and just an appreciation. So right now, in the state of South Dakota, speech-language pathologists are hard to come by. They're hard to come by for schools, they're hard to come by for hospitals, nursing homes. I mean, anywhere where speech pathology is needed. And so we are very grateful for this partnership with Prairie Lakes as far as helping us. It's an addition for us. It helps lessen the amount of online and having people in person. So just a general statement of appreciation there, and that's probably where we're headed because there's just not, the, right now, we're not producing as many in the state as are needed, so.
So this one will be all in person and then?
Correct.
Is it comparable in cost to what we're paying the other, like contracted SLP?
Yep. It's a little bit more, but it is an actual person that will be servicing the students versus the online platform.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. All right, item eight point four, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and levy resolution.
Yes, action on this item approves the annual budget of FY twenty-six, and it establishes the dollars per thousand levy amounts to be presented to the county auditor. This resolution mirrors the budget that was presented and discussed during the budget hearing.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six budget and levy resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion by Moulton, second by Rosman. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Item eight point five, canvas, approve the twenty-five school board election results.
All right, Stuart, we're officially approving you popping off the board.
I hope this one goes through.
Conflict of interest.
Action on this item approves the official canvas sheet for the twenty twenty-five election.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of official canvas sheet for twenty twenty-five school board election results.
Second.
Got a motion by Moulton, second by Rosman. Congratulations, Jean, on being reelected, and again, Bailey, welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Second reading of policies.
Yes, we have no change to any of the policies from first reading to second reading, so the first one was the benefits and leave from work employees at Lake Area Technical College. Again, no change from last month.
Is there a motion to approve?
Do we have to do them?
Separately.
Okay, yep. I move approval of item eight point six point one.
We got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
And a second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. At eight point six point two.
Yes, this is the procedure for reconsideration of library materials, and again, no change from last month. The big piece there was that a decision could be filed in Circuit Court.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of policy I J L dash A, procedure for reconsideration.
We've got a motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Eight point six point three.
Yes, that is the compulsory attendance ages, and that reflects the update to the law for students under eighteen to be excused if they are in a GED program.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the compulsory attendance ages policy.
Got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. J E, excuse me, J E G exemptions from school attendance.
Yes, that's the exemptions from school attendance. That outlines the, the high school equivalency program and also adds the religious exemption after eighth grade into, for our colony students.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of policy J E G exemptions for school attendance.
Second.
Got a motion by Moulton, second by Rosman. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Eight point six point five, the K E C public concern about instructional resources.
Yes, similar to the library, this is also, solidifies the complaint procedure and identifies that a board decision could be appealed to the Circuit Court.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of policy K E C public concern about instructional resources.
Second.
Got a motion by Moulton, second by Rosman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Eight point seven point one, open enrollment.
Yes, we do have one open enrollment for your consideration and recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the one open enrollment as listed.
Got a motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion's approved. Doesn't look like we have any thirteen, twenty-eight tens.
We do not.
Okay. Administrative reports.
Okay, two board members that are coming back. The Associate School Board Conference is August seventh and eighth, so please let me know of your attendance. Some of you already have done that, so I can get you registered for that if you plan to attend. A big thank you, Ms. Clausen noted it in the budget hearing, but thank you to First Interstate Bank. We received twenty-five thousand dollar grant from them for our We Are All Arrows murals. We have completed them at Jefferson, at McKinley, at Lincoln, and then also on the wall when you come into, in the arrow zone in the intermediate school. Mallett will be the final one. That we are waiting until after the aforementioned air conditioning project gym remodel, so, so as that we don't scuff that up. But a big thanks to First Interstate Bank for that donation. I just want to make note to the board and the public, right now, we are trying to secure our title funds. Right now, in Washington, DC, some of those are being held up. And so that, that is of concern to us. It doesn't necessarily mean we won't get them, but for now, they are being held up and we don't know exactly when or what the amount might be for some of those funds. So that could have some impact to the budget as well during this school year.
Do you, do you, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Do you typically have those by now or not by now?
Correct. Yes.
So how, how behind are we at this point for those notifications?
Uh, two months.
It is that far. Okay.
The biggest one would be our Title II funds that we don't know about.
Yeah, no answer.
We have received some known amounts for some of those other ones. For example, the Title IV, which is what pays that MOU that we, with HSA.
And have those come in level.
They have not. Uh, yes. So we're hopeful, but we, we don't have a lot of information as to why they're being held up. And then because we're, next month, we start school. Pre, the, the pre-parent teacher conference evening is August eighteenth. There'll be more information coming out to students and families about that. And then school actually starts on April twenty-first.
April.
April.
August. No, April. August, sorry. Um, yes, August, we'll, we'll make, we'll start it in August, August twenty-first. And then we, we talked about the Allen Mitchell Field Project. As we wrap that up, we will be making an announcement of a public open house. We want to, we've got a meeting tomorrow, so hopefully we can know a little bit more when we can do that. But for fans, the home opener for football out there will be on Friday, August twenty-ninth. So versus Sioux Falls-Jefferson, so we're excited to see that.
Can the board do a pre-tour?
Yes.
Yeah.
We sure could do that. We could look at adding that to the August eleventh meeting if you want.
Okay, sure.
All right, anything with the field quotes then? We'll get there.
Good.
Okay, all right, nine point two, board report to superintendent. Okay, I'm going to officially do my last duty, I guess, and turn it over to Heidi for appoint, Heidi is the business manager and temporary chair of the organizational meeting.
Do we need to adjourn this one?
She gets appointed first.
Okay, okay, yep. All right, I've been appointed as temporary chair, so we will adjourn this meeting at six seventeen. Can I get a motion to adjourn the regular July meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I just thought you were done already. I was going to steal your thunder.
Take it back. I rescind my comment.
I move approval, I, I move that we adjourn.
Ruined your moment.
No, it's okay.
All right, we have a motion for the last time by Stuart Stein.
At least for now, could be back.
All right.
For now, I said.
For now.
For now, could be back.
Just wanted to ask one more thing. I'll second it since I tried to first.
Second by Rosman. We are adjourned at six seventeen.
Got a vote yet.
Get a vote.
Oh. Last one. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Do you want me to take it for you?
There you go. Nice. Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yep, okay, nice, thank you. I don't think I'll make it unless they're on.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Take care.
Do you want me to just leave this here?
You took your eyes out of my...
Here, Jean, I'll do this, that you'll be reading here shortly.
And right here, make a change.
Oh, no.
Wow. Fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Anywhere you want.
Here, or here.
It keeps tricking me. I keep hearing baby.
Right here?
Yeah.
That way I can, I can keep looking in the house.
You can.
I'm losing my mind every time.
You can sit.
Do you want me to sit down?
Okay.
Heidi has, it's right there, so.
Oh.
I already had it all.
Oh, all right.
Okay, then we're good to go.
We're trying to balance.
Okay, the table, we got minutes. All right, we will call the meeting order at six twenty. And at this time, we'll administer the oath of office to Jean and Bailey. Um, Jean, at this time, can you administer your oath of office?
Certainly. I, Jean Moulton, having been a...
I, Jean Moulton, having been elected to the office of school board member within and for said Watertown School District, number fourteen dash four, Cottington County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of said office of school board member in accordance with the laws.
Thank you, Jean.
Sure.
If you go ahead, I'll have you sign this one and then pass it down.
Okay.
And then Bailey, you may go ahead and be your oath of office.
I, Bailey Rammel, having been elected to the office of school board member within and for said Watertown School District, number fourteen dash four, Cottington County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of school board member in accordance with the laws.
Thank you, Bailey. If you could sign yours and then pass it down. Um, for roll call, we are missing, at this point, yep, roll call, we are missing John Iverson and Carrie Lorre, so we'll take note of that. Are there any conflicts of interest to be noted at this point? Okay, with none stated, I need an approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
I have a motion by, um, Rochelle.
Second.
And a second by Jean. We also need a motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the review of the Conducting the Business in Public Brochure that was part of your board packet. If you could, um, note that you reviewed that, I do need a motion for that review.
Just one motion, right?
Yep.
Um, I move to acknowledge that we have reviewed the, was it Conducting the Public's Business in a, yep, meeting? In a public meeting, there we go, brochure.
Motion by Rochelle, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Jean, all in favor?
Can I, can I make a comment before we vote? Um, just for the, the, the audience members and the public, so there was a change to the statute this year of at your public meetings, that yearly, you need to review this Conducting the Public's Business in Public brochure prepared, prepared by the South Dakota Attorney General's Office. And so, we do, we are going to do that at our organizational meeting in July. So all the board members have been provided this brochure and have reviewed it, and then we are acknowledging it with this motion, so.
Does that end up posted with the meeting minutes, like if the public wants to see what it looks like, or does that not?
It won't be posted with the minutes. Yeah, we would note that it, um, we'll note that it's part of the Attorney General's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's probably on their website.
It was on their website.
Yes, it's on the website and it's in the board packet, so.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, I will ask for nominations of president.
Oops, we still gotta vote on that.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kind of a rookie here. Okay, at this time, I will ask for nominations of president.
Um, I will move to nominate John Iverson for president of the Watertown School Board.
Okay, Rochelle nominating John Iverson. Are there any other nominations? Okay. With no other nominations, I need a motion to cease and that a unanimous ballot be cast for John Iverson.
I move that nominations cease and a unanimous ballot be cast for John Iverson for president of Watertown School Board.
Okay, motion by Jean, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Rossman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, John Iverson is declared the chairman of the Watertown School Board for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. With John out, I will now ask for nominations of vice president.
Uh, I will, oh, go ahead, if you want to do it.
No, go.
Okay, I'll move to nominate Carrie Lorre as vice president of the Watertown School Board.
Okay. Rossman nominating Lorre, are there any other nominations for, for vice president? Okay, with no other nominations, I need a motions, motion to cease and that a unanimous ballot be cast for Carrie Lorre.
I move that nominations cease and a unanimous ballot be cast for Carrie Lorre as vice president of Watertown School Board.
Okay, I have a motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Rossman, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie Lorre is declared vice president of the Watertown School Board for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. With Carrie out.
Oh! I got so excited.
Oh, no, I didn't even notice. Look at that.
With Carrie out, I will ask for an appointment to run the organizational meeting.
Um, I will move that.
You appoint this in public.
Jean Moulton as, do I say temporary chair of the meeting?
Yes.
All right, Rochelle appointing Jean Moulton. I need a motion to appoint Jean Moulton as the temporary chair.
Second.
Motion by Bailey. And second by.
Rossman.
Rossman.
Sorry. Nope? Oh, no, it was Bailey who seconded.
She made the motion before you even.
Oh! It was backwards, you read it backwards.
Okay.
I made the motion.
So, yep, so you made the motion and you seconded it?
Yes.
So, Jean Moulton, you are declared the temporary chair.
Oh, we gotta vote.
And we have to vote on that.
Aye.
Aye. We're doing great, you guys.
All right, I could not be happier to, to put you in charge, Jean.
I did a little dramatic flourish too. Got that on camera?
All right, Jean, it's all you. I'm confident you will do better.
Moving on.
Okay.
We're up to item three, reestablishment of policies and procedures. Item three point one, format for twenty-five, twenty-six school board meetings.
Yes, it is recommended that the school board continue withholding its regular meeting on the second Monday of the month at five thirty PM in the district administrative offices located at the high school.
Did I have a motion for that?
I am trying to pull my thing back up. I will make a motion that we approve, what was the number? Three.
Three point one.
Three point one. There we go.
All right, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to establish the format for twenty-five, twenty-six school board meetings. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Since we need three. Motion passes. Any opposed? All right. We're up to three point two, set date for school board election, June second, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, this would establish the first Tuesday in June as our date for the twenty twenty-six school board election.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Move that we approve, uh, item three point two for setting the school board election for June second of twenty twenty-six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to establish the school board election date. Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're up to three point three, set school board salaries for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, we're looking at a hundred and thirty dollars per meeting. Um, the current rate is a hundred and twenty-five. The maximum allowed by state statute remains at a hundred and sixty-six dollars.
May I have a motion to set school board salaries?
I move that we approve the school board salaries for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve school board salaries for twenty-five, twenty-six. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We're up to three point four, approval of participation in breakfast and lunch programs.
Yes, approval is needed to participate in the federal USDA breakfast and lunch program.
Okay, may I have a motion for approval of breakfast and lunch programs?
Move that we approve participation in breakfast and lunch programs.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve the breakfast and lunch programs. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Three point five, approval of truancy agreement.
Yes, the attached agreement is similar to that of the prior years, and it is, and is between the Watertown Police Department and the district in which the district appoints the police department as its truancy officers.
May I have a motion concerning truancy?
Move that we approve the truancy agreement.
A second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve truancy agreements, three point five. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Three point six, approval of fees for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, this motion is to approve our fees noted for activity tickets. We're noted at eighty dollars for adult and twenty dollars for student. This is no change from the previous year. Six dollars for adult single events and four dollars for student. That is a dollar change for each of those. And continuing with the no charge for sixty-five plus. Nutrition service meals are noted as well. We have three eighty for high school and middle school meals and three sixty for intermediate elementary, um, as well as the free and reduced price program, um, related. The regular breakfast is three dollars for the high school and middle school and two eighty for intermediate elementary. Within the fee schedule, um, we also have the substitute pay scale noted there. So our certified substitutes at twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. This is equivalent of a hundred and seventy-four dollars per day. Non-certified subs at nineteen twenty-five an hour or a hundred and fifty-four dollars per day. Long-term assignments are noted at twenty-three dollars and fifty cents per hour or a hundred and eighty-eight dollars per day. For substitute planning time, sixteen dollars an hour, and for employee planning time, thirty-four dollars per hour. For classified substitutes, so that would be our payers or working in the kitchen, um, that would be the rate of the position to which it's assigned. Are there any questions on that?
I'm asking for a motion concerning approval of fees for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Move that we approve all fees for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as listed.
And a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve the fees for twenty-five, twenty-six. Do we post these, are any discussion, do we, do we post these on the website? Some of this?
Yep, yep, we do. Um, I know the substitute pay scale, I believe that goes under the, do we have a sub-tab out there that it's included within?
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Three point seven, appointment of school board committees, and we'll do this as a lump after, after.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I, if I may, um, some committee assignments for you. So, three point seven point one is the Personnel Committee recommending Rochelle Rossman and Bailey Rammel. And then, three point seven point two, the Property Committee recommending Jean Moulton and Carrie Lorre. The Northeast Technical High School Board Representatives recommending John Iverson, Jean Moulton, Carrie Lorre with alternate Rochelle Rossman. ASBSD Convention Delegate recommending Bailey Rammel with Rochelle Rossman as the alternate. ASBSD Legislative Rep recommending Rochelle Rossman. Board of Equalization recommending Jean Moulton. Bisco Board Representative recommending Bailey Rammel. Arrow Education Foundation Rep recommending Carrie Lorre. The Professional Growth Committee Reps recommending Rochelle Rossman and Jean Moulton. Lake Area Technical College Foundation Board recommending John Iverson. Lake Area Technical College Strategic Advisory Council recommending Rochelle Rossman. And the Lake Area Technical Leadership Committee recommending Jean Moulton and Carrie Lorre. And I think I had a couple flipped at the end there, but I got them all covered.
We got it, yeah.
I'm entertaining a motion for appointment of school board committee positions.
I, uh, move that we approve the appointment of all school board committee positions as stated.
Need a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve school board committee positions. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're up to section three point eight, determinations of institutions and personnel, up to three point eight point one, designate official financial depositories.
Yes, we were, we recommend First Premier Bank and First Interstate Bank as we, um, work through the transition period.
I request a motion for this.
Move that we designate, uh, the official financial depositories as, who was it again?
First Premier Bank.
Excuse me, First Premier Bank moving over from First Interstate Bank.
And a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to designate First Premier Bank and First Interstate Bank through the transition period. But First Inter, First Premier Bank will be the official. Any, uh, discussion, questions? If not, in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, and, and you opposed? Not. Motion passes. We're up to three point eight point two, designate official school newspaper.
We recommend continuing with the Watertown Public Opinion.
Motion, please.
Make a motion, uh, or move that we approve the official newspaper, school newspaper as the Watertown Public Opinion.
And a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve Watertown Public Opinion as official newspaper. Any discussion or questions?
One comment, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Um, just, if people are wondering with the inception of the Watertown Current, uh, a newspaper needs to be in publication for a full calendar year to even be considered. And what I, the date I have from Watertown Current staff was September ninth. So, if people are wondering, and for Brandon in the audience here, um, if that was even a consideration, it was a consideration, but we need to follow state law as well, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye as well, and, and you opposed? If not, okay, the motion passes. Watertown Public opinion is official newspaper. Three point eight point three, designate legal counsel.
Yes, recommending, uh, Rory King from Vance, Gosh, and Kramer, uh, as well as the KSB Law Firm. Um, Rory is our general school attorney, and we have utilized KSB, um, more specifically for our Title IX.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I think a motion, uh, that we approve the legal counsel as Rory King and his law firm and the KSB law firm.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to designate legal counsel with Rory King, Vance, Gosh, and Kramer, that's a long list, LLC, and KSB School Law. Any questions, discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We're up to section three point eight point four, designate state and federal coordinators. Do you want to do these separate?
Yes, I would ask that you do each separate, please.
Okay.
So for, sorry.
Three point eight point four point one, Title I, Emily Hatton as principal designee.
Yes, uh, we did split these, uh, the five oh four and the Title I, uh, this year. That is different, but, uh, so Emily Hatton is our Title I coordinator.
Okay, I will ask for a motion.
Move that we approve Emily Hatton as the Title I coordinator.
And a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve Emily Hatton as Title I coordinator. Any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. We're up to three point eight point four point two, section five oh four, Dr. Jennifer Ballinger, Special Services Director.
Yes, recommending Dr. Ballinger for that position.
Thank you. I need a motion, please.
Uh, move that we approve Dr. Ballinger as section five oh four.
And a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve Dr. Ballinger as Special Services Director. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes. Three point eight point four point three, Title II, Homeless Education, Derek Barrios Assistant.
Yes, correct, recommending Mr. Barrios for that particular title.
Thank you, I need a motion, please.
Uh, I move that we approve Derek Barrios as homeless education coordinator for Title II.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve Derek Barrios as homeless education, Title II, any discuss, discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Up to three point eight point four point four, Discrimination, Craig Boyens, Activities Director, Title IX.
Recommending Mr. Boyens once again for Title IX.
Okay, need a motion, please.
Move that we approve, uh, Mr. Boyens as the Title IX Discrimination.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Move by Rossman, seconded by Rammel, to approve Craig Boyens as Assist, Activities Director as Title IX Discrimination Director. Uh, any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. We're up to adjournment.
Boy, that was fun.
Good work!
I need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we, okay.
Oh, good job! I keep trying to steal it from everyone. Second.
Okay, move by Rammel, seconded by Rossman to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Stealing everyone's thunder. Go!
Six forty.